Good morning, we are, I've got Mackenzie giving Andrea a call to see if we can, if she wants to join us by phone or by Zoom. Hold on, we'll find out.
I'm here. This is Andrea.
Ah. Well, very good. Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah.
Ignore the call from Mackenzie. All right, well, we're gonna go ahead and get back to our meeting. We do have an interview with Andrea for the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. Andrea, I want to thank you for joining us. We have some questions. The commissioners will alternate the questions. We'll begin with Commissioner Netherland, Commissioner Shuini, and myself. And there's no right or wrong answer. Just be yourself and have fun with it.
Okay.
Oh, can't hear you, Randy.
You can't hear me? Oh.
There we go. Good morning, Andrea. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for being here today and talking to us. Your first question is gonna be, what do you see as the function of the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission?
Um, well, I'm really not sure, but I would assume that you guys would help find and protect and restore historic buildings and help find grants for people who need money to fix them up.
Great. Why is it that you want to serve on this advisory board?
Well, I am, I recently moved here from Philadelphia and I've been working in historic preservation for the past 10 years. And my mother-in-law said, "Oh, hey, they're looking for someone on the historic commission. Maybe you should join that. There's not a lot of historic buildings here, but you know, you know a lot about them, so you should do something you're interested in."
You gotta love mothers, right?
Yeah.
All right, how will you help raise community awareness of Mason County history and historic resources?
Um, well, I'm not sure. I am working at the hardware distillery right now with them, so I see a lot of people. I guess through that way I can communicate about our history and that's a good question. I don't know. Word of mouth?
And you'll have more opportunities as time comes. You'll figure that out. The board typically meets on the second Thursday of each month around 2:00 PM. Will this be an issue for you in any way?
No, I don't think so.
Andrea, do you have any conflicts of interest with the mission of the advisory board?
What is the mission of the advisory board?
Go for it, Commissioner Shuini.
Uh, the, the, um, well, the mission is to work on historic preservation and raising awareness for different sites in Mason County and then partnering with them. We provide grant funding through a small fund that we have to organizations that are looking to do work in the preservation area. And so, you know, there's, there's that component of it as well. So I guess the question there would be focused on, are you also on any other organizations that would potentially receive grant funding through historic preservation?
No.
Okay.
All right, great. One final question. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, well, yeah, I, I guess that was kind of my question, like what, like what do you guys do? What is your, what's a regular week or month or meeting like? Are there times when you are busy doing a whole lot of paperwork? Or are you going out to sites? Are you doing like investigations of buildings? Yeah.
So I quit. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was gonna say, I think Luke Vescuzzi, who's on here, I think Luke is the, is kind of transitioned over to staffing the uh, the historic preservation board. Is that correct, Luke?
That is correct. Yep, I can, I can kind of elaborate on that. All right. Hi, Andrew. So the Historic Preservation Commission has at times changed its focus depending on who's on the commission or what's relevant at the times, but really, there's always been a focus on one preserving historic resources in the county through local register of sites. And then supporting the organizations that are working on preservation within Mason County. So every year we have a grant program and that is, you know, a quarter to half the year of just administrative work of having grant proposals come in, you know, checking on those proposals, communicating out to the applicants, getting funding to them and then reviewing their final reports. So a large part of that is really the administrative work of making sure that community organizations have the funds they need to, to do the work that we feel is important. And the other part of the year is really determined by the commission depending on what is relevant at the time. We just, a few months ago, released a plaque program. It's a building, site, or place plaque program in which applicants can apply to get their site recognized, not as a, not as a locally registered site, but as a more easily accessible way for us to acknowledge our, our own history and resources.
Not on the like National Register or anything like that.
Exactly, exactly. But it allows us to then kind of start vetting these places that potentially could be on a local state or national register because we're starting to build up the information. And then it gives us a better idea of what resources are actually in the county. And so that's, that's a program that's right now in its infancy. And so we're probably in the next year looking to continue building on that.
Yeah, I feel like just, you know, getting a little bit of recognition and even just like little plaques or signs in front of buildings, you know, that's a, that's a good start.
Well, and I mean, just, just so you know, the, another reason for that is you will be asked probably to go to some of these locations. So being able to assess them yourself, but the public participation and part of your job would be helping to ensure public participation in some of those issues. That's why that other question earlier, it's, it's a major factor in our Historic Preservation Committee, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just hoping that I can help more. I haven't really worked on the admin side. I've always done hands-on restoration and investigation with houses and buildings, so. Um, that's why I'm like, oh, should we go to sites? Do we do, you know, reports on the structures or like building styles or, you know, stuff like that? Or like talk to the contractors who's, who are actually doing the work to make sure they're doing it correctly? I feel like that's where I could help the most. I mean, I can also learn how to write grants too, if that's needed.
And that's always a bonus. Well, and Luke, maybe if, if you wouldn't mind sending Andrea the, a link to our website or the page for the Historic Preservation Commission, that would, that would also help with getting more information.
Yeah, I can kind of outline, like, here's our, here's the top five historic preservation links to understand the, the work that we do. That's a good idea.
Okay, that would be great. All right, Andrea, any other questions for us?
Uh, no, I think that's it.
All right. Well, I know you guys may have a busy weekend this weekend with the Fjord and crossing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Gonna be very busy. Yep, you're welcome. Do you want me to continue on, on the meeting, or should I sign out?
Um, you can go ahead and sign off and then we'll have staff reach out to you. And we'll probably make a decision at the end of our briefing.
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
All right, bye.
Bye. All right, let's move on to WSU. Dan.
Well, good morning, commissioners. You got the program report in your packet. And I can proudly say this is probably one of our busier ones that we've done. A lot of very successful programming efforts undertaken by our dedicated staff and I'm proud to represent them to you, but I do want to be honest with you. I was not a part of all of these programs. We have some amazing staff members who are taking leadership and driving these, so. I'm just here to share some snippets of our amazing team. And thank you for your support. My, my passion is youth development, as you're aware, and it makes my heart warm when I can share with you. We had some 4H members doing public presentations again in person at Tractor Supply a few months ago, and it was fantastic. Seeing these little kids share their passions for their little projects or their bunny, one little girl brought a bunny on a harness and carabiner to her shoe so the bunny wouldn't hop away while she talked about what it meant to raise a bunny and care for a bunny. So teaching those valuable speaking skills is, is, is a really big part of 4H, which is fantastic. So proud to see that. Youth gardening group is going. It's a partnership between 4H and Master Gardeners. They meet monthly up at Catalyst Park where they teach kids how to grow things. Our last session we held was all about worm compost bins and what to do with them, which was great. Our Clover Kids program is a monthly program free to our community. It exposes families to what 4H is all about. And now we're expanding that to North Mason as well, so we'll be able to expand that and reach more families that way. Our 4H Camp Counselor Program series is wrapping up as summer camp gets started here relatively soon. So we have 30 youth staff that have been taking part in year-round counselor training, learning those leadership skills to be effective leaders at a summer camp. And our summer camp is in July this year with about 100 campers. So it's gonna be an exciting time. I'm glad that that program is back. And my daughter is a camp counselor and my son is a camper, so exciting times there for sure. Our SNAP Ed program continues to reach new audiences with educational resources on healthy eating as well as expanding their SNAP benefits. They were part of the opening of the Shelton Farmers Market and they continue to partner with amazing community members as well on that. Master Gardener program wrapped up their Through Through the Garden Gate series. Tremendous professional development in the horticulture area. Between 50 and 90 participants each session, and it was a hybrid this year. So kudos to them for embracing technology and making it work for those that need that. Some of the topics were plants indoors and out, victory gardens, native bees, and veggies in abundance. So some amazing professional development happening here in Mason County by our dedicated Master Gardener volunteers. Our plant sale happened as well. Big kudos to Lynch Creek Farm for helping us and allowing us to set up in one of their warehouses. That ensures that we have a dry space to have our plant sale, which is fantastic. Over 4,300 fruits, vegetables, ornamentals, and native plants were sold to over 260 participants. So it was a wonderful weekend for that. A really big feat as well. All 24 garden beds are filled up at Catalyst Park for our community garden. So people are really looking to get out and garden right now, which is fantastic. So every Saturday, we have Master Gardeners out there helping and educating our community on what to do with gardening things and how to grow them. We also offer every Monday, our plant clinic is in our office where people can bring in bugs, plants, ask questions, and Master Gardeners are there to help them as well. Our Small Farms, our Small Farms program is, has got a grant. And so we're helping educate the people on green crab. I don't know if you're familiar with green crab, but it's invasive crab that's making its way through the Puget Sound area. It's not a good thing. They're not sure what to do with it. It doesn't have a edibility piece to it, but they're helping people identify how to find the molt so that we can track that better and what to do with this crab. So 20 people participated in that workshop as well. And then we are expanding and restarting up our septic workshops. So I'm excited to see our septic workshops come, come back to life as well. And in our Noxious Weed program, Kella is out and about at various community events, getting people to be aware of our noxious weeds here in Mason County. She's doing a great job partnering with agencies and sharing resources on Giant Hogweed workshops as well as a knotweed open house up in Belfair State Park. And it's the, it's the polling season right now. It's the field season for them, so they're out in the field on a regular basis. Doing all the things to keep those weeds at bay here in Mason County to be a wonderful place to live and visit. And my last one is a bit of all the realm for me, but hopefully by Wednesday wraps up our Broadband Action Team report. I've been instrumental in getting a statewide grant through the broadband office in Washington State to extension to create and expand broadband action teams in every county and tribe in Washington State. So I've been helping Mason County with their BAT broadband action team create their plan on shovel-ready projects. When state and federal funding become available, Mason County wants to be at the top of that list for projects and priorities. So getting that into the state, that, that, that report is due Wednesday. So working with our team to get that report in, and a special kudos to commission and county employees and residents for helping make that a reality. So it was a busy few months, very, very proud of our work. And boy, do we have some amazing community partners and residents here in, in our, in our communities. So. Are there any questions, commissioners?
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Well, just thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Now, and looking through it, my goodness, you guys are busy. And I think it's fun looking through there too, because I have to look at the name of the, so like hogweed, giant hogweed. You know, what does it really look like? Do I have any? And so I would encourage people to, to take a look at their property and, and see if they do have anything. And then if you do spot something that you don't know or get ahold of Dan, get ahold of our, our weed people.
Yeah, and if you think you even have something, we're happy to come out and take a look. Sometimes it looks like something native as well. So we want to make sure the native things stay and the non-native things don't, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing for the 4H, for the kids. They, that's an awesome program, and so thank you so much for doing all of that work.
Yeah, we're, you know, we hit a lull and a low with COVID and we are definitely growing now, which is fantastic. Now is the time we're preparing for fair. So we're gonna see some Mason County members participate in the Graves Harbor County Fair again. That's our home fair. We have horses going to fair, chickens, bunnies, a lot of projects from Mason County, so we are definitely on the move, which is fantastic, so.
That's great news. And let us know when the, when the fair is. Remind us maybe next time and then that way we can make sure that we go and support our Mason County folks.
That'd be fantastic. I'll send you an invite.
All right, sounds great.
Thanks, commissioners. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. All right, let's move on to our sheriff's office. Do we have Chief Hanson there?
I'm here. How you doing?
There you are.
Yeah, I'm back. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So today we're gonna talk about the Department of Corrections prisoner housing contract. It's up for renewal the end of June this year. They have a draft sample contract that they've attached. They've increased the rates by the statutory maximum, I think, which is 5% a year through the, through June 30th of 2025, it looks like. So as you guys remember, probably in terms of swift and certain, I think you probably recognize those terms from years past when DOC used to house our violators in our jail. Since we've lifted the booking restrictions because of our jail population being low, we have started taking the DOC prisoners again. So we may see a little bit of revenue from this contract again. And it's, and I say a little bit because the Department of Corrections doesn't want to restore what they call administrative hearings team here in the jail because apparently it takes a lot of coordination on their part. So, so how it's gonna work is anybody that comes in contact with law enforcement in Mason County that has a DOC warrant or the DOC officers bring them over from the office to incarcerate them, they're gonna stay here for short term, anywhere between one and three to five days. And then they're, if they need a hearing, they're gonna send them out of here, probably over to Niskali still to do the hearings. So the reason I say limited, limited income potential is because the contract doesn't allow us to bill until after the first 24 hours of incarceration, then we can start billing the daily rate. So there's gonna be some. I guess in the big picture, what's good about it is, is you know, it's, we're sending the message out to the people in our community that if you got a warrant, you're gonna come back to jail, and we haven't been able to do that for a long time, so. So that's a good, that's good news.
That's great news. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I can't hear you, Randy.
Historically, just for inside information, years ago, we used to collect $525,000, $550,000 a year as revenue from the Swift and Certain project. After we did the expansion of the jail and spent $2 million, we were supposed to be collecting up to $750,000. So that stuff just disappeared. So anything that he's bringing in now is just a plus because we have not budgeted for that in five years, four years?
2015, probably.
Yeah, so it's a, a brand-new revenue stream. And looking at some of the numbers that we're gonna be talking about here shortly, we need that revenue stream. So thank you very much, Sheriff and Chief, for bringing that back. We may need it in order to offset any other shortcomings in, in revenue, so thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Commissioner Shuini, anything?
Nope, just support, support movement board with it.
Yeah, I think it's exciting. It's good to see that things are opening up again.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. All righty, so we'll move this forward to the next agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Sheriff. All right, let's move on to support services.
Morning commissioners. I've got Jamie Taylor, our county coroner, with me today.
Good morning, Jamie.
That we'll be talking about a little bit later, but we'll jump right in with Jen's financial report for the month of May.
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, commissioners. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. So here's the, the May financials comparing 2023 to 2022.
There's nothing, there we go.
Okay, so we have we have the revenue for current expense. We have through May of '23, $20,627,000 collected. The same time period last year, we had $20,012,000 collected in all the departments within the general fund. We're at 49% of our budgeted revenue compared to last year. We were also at 49%. So overall, looking good. Moving on to the treasures revenue detail. We have collected 14,353,000, 354,000 through, through May in the treasures department compared to last year, same time period, 14,712,000 or 711,000, sorry, my rounding is off. So for the property taxes, it looks like we're down, but we didn't do the levy shift this year. So we're actually right on with where we should be. We had levy shifted in 2022, $1,080,000, and so we're, you know, about $500,000 down over last year, so that looks about right. The sales taxes up, which we'll go over, of course, a little later. The places that were down, the city-county assistance is where we're down a lot. And that's related to REIT, so that makes sense. All of the, the property, the REIT is down compared to last year.
That was one of my questions. If you go back to that, explain that one to me because that, that was a big difference. I also see the, before we get too far, we do have a benefit on the Forest Excise Tax that came in early, and that's not capped at anything. If they're doing this much by, by, you know, half year, we can expect quite a bit more coming in on the Forest Excise Tax. Is that correct?
I don't know. I would have to research that.
Was it county assistance? You're saying that's based on the REIT?
Yeah, that is directly related to REIT. And I don't remember off the top of my head what the percentage is, but it's collected as part of property sales and then it's remitted through the state and then remitted to the county every quarter. And so, yeah, we're down a lot over the previous year, but I mean, the last couple of years we're doing so great and now we're back to normal levels, I feel like, in, in real estate. So.
So on, on that number, was that, is that strictly properties within the city or properties throughout the whole county on the REIT that that is, that that comes out of?
I believe it's through the whole county, but I can research that as well.
Okay, please do.
Jen, was this the one that had to do with when the state moved to destination-based sales tax and they were coming back and kind of truing up and, and giving some of the smaller counties additional funds to, to make them whole?
Yes, that is how that tax started.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I'll do some more research and get back to you on that.
Well, depending on how that comes in, that can be a real hole in our budget we need to watch. If, because I'm looking at the numbers on the REIT, we are actually better off this month than we were on the last month because instead of 40%, we're at like 32% from where we were the year before. And that's only showing 250 in there. That's a little scary if we have a budget at 2.5.
Yeah, and where we're making up for that is in the, the interest. We had only budgeted $250,000. You know, we've collected $871,000, so. So, I mean, it's not quite making up for it, but somewhat.
It's a nice hit though. It's a nice added addition. Inflation has a benefit sometimes, and this is one of them for the county at least.
Yeah, and I mean, overall, cash-wise, if we are gonna go through a recession at all, I mean, we're in a good place. So I think we're, we're doing okay. Any other comments or questions on this before we move on?
No.
Okay, so on the expenditure side of things for current expense, we have expended $17,943,000 through the end of May compared to last year, $16,271,000. We're 38% of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to 37% last year, so looking pretty good there. The special fund and six-year recap. Community development is up in their revenue compared to last year, so that's good. And then detention and correction is pretty much flat. The property taxes that we already talked about, we didn't levy shift. That explains why we're lower than the last couple of years. The road diversion is pretty well flat. The county road property tax is higher because of the levy shift. We didn't do it, so they get more of their tax base back. The sales tax is up the overall this year. And then the criminal justice taxes is pretty flat, a little bit up. Rural sales and use tax is up, makes sense, that follows the property tax. Filings are down and lodging taxes a little bit down compared to last year, but still up over the previous few years. And REIT is at $510,000, not, not too far down, but down over the last couple of years. But we had a couple of great years there.
Just for note for the other commissioners, that's actually a better number than it looks like. We, we were running, like I was saying earlier, between 39 and 40% backwards. Right now, we've made up some ground and we're right at about 32, 33. So we made up some ground there. That's, it, it's hard to see that, but it's, it's a better number than it looks.
Okay, so moving on to the, the county sales tax. So we had, we received this month in May, And for the first time since 2020, June of 2020, so about three years ago, for the first time, we are actually down in sales tax compared to the previous year, so. year. So um so last year, at this time, we received eight hundred and nineteen thousand. This year, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand for the month of May. So we had a really good run. I mean, we're still doing great on our sales tax. Um so anyway, we um are expected to receive about nine and a half million um by the end of the year. And we have, we've only budgeted eight point four, so sales tax is still doing great, but um but again, for the first time in three years, we're down just a little bit. So um
Let's hope it's a blip and not a pattern.
Yeah, yeah.
If we drop thirty grand per year, we're gonna be back to where we were, but less than what we collected uh last year.
Yeah, personally, I'm not too worried about it. Just, I mean, you know, it was bound to go down at some point just a little bit. Um, so yeah, hopefully it's a just a blip and not a trend. On the six-year um financial recap, so we have um twenty-nine million in cash at the end of May, so um even if things go down, we're we're great there. Um revenue, again, we're at forty-nine percent in the general fund of our budget and then thirty-eight percent in expenditures. Um so looking good there. On the special fund cash balances, we are looking at sixty-one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Um, that includes seven million in ARPA that we need to expend here in the next few years. Um I think everybody's working hard on expending that legally um to get that done. So um any questions on the cash balances or the recap?
Where'd we end up last year? At the end of our year, we were close to twenty-five million. Is that correct? Do you remember?
We were at twenty-six, twenty-six.
Yeah, just extrapolating that out, we have some things to talk about coming up.
So moving on to the motor pool summary, we are um with budgeted one point seven million and we've expended just under six hundred thousand. We're at thirty-four point eight-nine percent of our budget, so um looking pretty good overall in the motor pool. So questions or comments on the motor pool?
No.
Okay, moving on to the special fund revenue. We have received uh twenty-six million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand at the end of May in all of our special and other funds, county funds. Um compared to the previous year, twenty-three million, one hundred twenty-six thousand. The major things that I see is that um Belfair, we've received some some revenue, a couple million. We had not received last year, and then equipment rental and revolving, it looks like um they're doing their billings earlier in the year, which is great. They should be doing those um monthly by law, so that's awesome. Um, county roads received a little over a million more. Um, a lot of that's property tax again, like we talked about. Those are the major things that I see. So any questions or comments on that?
Nope.
Okay, and the last page is the expenditures for the special and other funds. We have expended eighteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand compared to last year, seventeen million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. We're at twenty-four percent of our expenditure budget compared to last year, twenty-two percent. So that's all I have on the uh May financials, so um is there any other questions or comments?
Nothing from me, Commissioners?
Nope. Me.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome, and I'll do some more research on the city county assistance and I'll email you, Commissioner.
Okay.
And I do have um one other thing that came up this morning. I was contacted by um the Washington State Conservation District and um our Mason County Conservation uh District about the voluntary stewardship program. They have a new contract that is effective July first, and they're asking for the board to sign or for the chair to sign of our board. We serve as the um pass-through entity. And um this isn't on our agenda, but I was wondering if it would be okay if we get that on the June twentieth agenda, Commissioners, so that um we can get that going for them. It's effective July first, twenty-three through um through June thirtieth of twenty-five, and it provides about two hundred and forty thousand in funding for them.
I'll do it with me.
Yep. And with me too. I know that this was, this was something that went through the legislature this year, so it's it's a good thing.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it's no- nothing, um, nothing looks surprising or, you know, out of the ordinary to me, so um, that would be great if we can get that on the agenda and get that rolling for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll stop my share.
Thanks, Jen. So our next topic, uh, it's kind of a sad topic, but uh would like John Taylor to come on and and talk about. Mr. Falk. John, are you there?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, in the Parks Department, we had a temporary seasonal worker who passed away in an accident uh last week, January fourth, and his parents would like to plant a tree in Sand Hill Park in his uh memory. Bud's been working with Washington State University and the parents to find the most appropriate tree that can be planted in Sand Hill because of the soil that will ensure that it will continue to grow. Uh, they have picked a tree, and I want to make sure I get the the name right. It is an autumn uh brilliance tree. And it would not be planted until this fall because it's the most appropriate time to ensure that the the tree will live. And they would like permission to be able to do that this fall.
I love that idea. Now, would would there also be a a plaque?
They have not asked for a plaque. But I would like to maybe have that as an option in case they would, they they would like to do that. Uh, they did not, they have not asked for that, but I think it would be something that I would like to ensure that we may be able to get approved for them.
I think we should. I'm just doing a little research right now. Uh, we could literally get a marker, we'll call it, uh, that can be placed in the ground for literally only several hundred dollars, so I think we should uh consider that.
All right, sir, I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
I I agree. I think that's good.
Then this is something we should move forward on to the next agenda?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Any questions?
No.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, John. So the next topic I have for you is why Jamie's here with me today is the county actually finalized the purchase of one twenty-six Neeland Street. Uh, this is a warehouse facility that it's gonna be shared by our coroner's office and our facilities group, so facilities has moved out of Mel's, I think, back in April. Um, they've kind of been roaming around and storing their stuff wherever they could, um, ready to 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 get started and and making this facility uh work for what our needs are. And and so I'm asking the commission to provide uh Kelly with a budget. He'd be able to do the majority or all of this work with his in-house staff. Um, but included in this is that uh we need to get a couple of garage door openers for the big bay doors that are there. Uh, we need to build a firewall that would secure the space between the coroner's office and our um and our facility storage. We gotta do some slight remodel of the front area because Jamie and her staff, that's where their offices will be located uh right out in front there. And just some paint and 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 air compressor and and some lighting upgrades for it. So I'm thinking that um it would, that would be around forty-five thousand dollars in total. And this, this would also include the purchase of a walk-in cooler for Jamie. So currently, Jamie has to contract with a local um provider to to store some of her customers in, and um we wanna, we wanna be able to do that. I I think that the cost of the walk-in cooler is about fifteen thousand dollars, so out of that forty-five thousand, fifteen thousand would be associated with the cooler. Uh, she currently pays fourteen hundred dollars a month. Um, so you could see the the payback of that, it would be fairly quickly.
So I'd like to throw a little addition into that to for consideration of the commission. We're looking at also having a facility that is up north. It would make sense for us to price things out at the same time uh for a perhaps a second one for emergency management issues or other uh unforeseen problems that may arise where they may be separated in order to have access up in the north for a bad catastrophe or something like that would make sense. It would make sense to look at them all at the same time and try to see if we can't pull a discount for doing more than one, or perhaps even find a used one when they're purchasing this one that they can get.
So you're talking about purchasing another cooler?
Yes. For the the North Mason Emergency Management uh uh coroner's operations, being able to access and work out of there, because eventually you have two separate areas whether we like to admit it or not. And during a catastrophe, you definitely have two separate areas, but other than that, uh, they have times where somebody may be out there in the middle of the night uh up north where they're separated, it may not be as easy to come down. It just seems like a low-cost uh way to provide for them for the future and for emergency management at the same time.
No, I think that's great. I mean, we we have a lot of calls up in Belfair and up in the north end. And you're right, um, Commissioner, during the night when it's early mornings, late night, it would be nice to do something like that. And if something uh big happened, then that would be nice as well.
Well, and I'm wondering if if John can do some research. I am, he's so amazing at at finding grants for or for um emergency situations or issues or um finding resources that that might also be something that he could look into.
I think it may be a little harder for for this particular issue through emergency management, but uh and the cost is so you know, fifteen thousand. Uh, I would hope we consider doing it and looking at it now. If we wait until a year or so for him to go through that process, it will lose the ability to do two things at once. My opinion.
So I'm I'm comfortable either way, but I mean, I think if we we have the cash, we can get it. We should just get it. Um, and Jamie, you're not really officially the coroner until you've been moved.
Oh, my gosh, that's not the truth.
Yeah, I think I think all of this is, uh, I think all of this is really reasonable and we'll be able to provide uh much-needed space. I'm good with it.
Commissioner Tress, are you okay with us looking at it now?
Oh, oh, absolutely. I was just saying that we, there's extra, extra, might be extra ways we can find funds.
I agree with you.
Grants out there, I'm I'm hundred percent behind getting those grants, but let's get it done. And I'm also pretty darn excited about getting that the the building up north going. I think it's it's uh
Yeah.
It's 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 something that we need to 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 keep moving on on that one. Right, Sheriff?
Yes, absolutely. We're excited to do that as well.
So we uh definitely get started on that, setting up a meeting, um, or attempting to set up a meeting with some of our staff from other departments to head up to to Belfair and take a look at the facility and make sure that we follow the proper process for doing any upgrades um or changes to the existing facility that's there. So we will be moving forward on that also, and I'll be coming back with additional information there. Um, definitely, we'll look into what the potential is for um purchasing, if we can get a deal on two, or if we can find one that's used, or maybe even a different, I don't know, we can talk about size, a smaller one. Uh, this one is fifteen by fifteen.
Ten by ten.
Oh, excuse me, ten by ten for the one here. Um
Hold on, about twelve to about twelve people.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you need a little room to move around in there. If you go ten by ten, uh there's no economy scale on this one, I don't think.
Well, they actually, they actually, in addition to purchasing the cooler, um, there'll be a a basically a forklift uh that they could utilize to to lift and and rack. Um
Yeah.
Their customer. So, yeah, so I think that uh excited to to get this started and going forward, and we'll we'll definitely include that, Commissioner Netherland.
Are we on the contract uh on the lease? Have we heard back yet?
We've not heard back yet from Bo.
Please remind me after this.
I'll reach out to Bo and and see if he has any questions or concerns about it.
As will I today.
Okay. And then as far as funding sources, um, I think that we may have an opportunity to utilize some of the um ARPA funds that we were not able to utilize originally. And so I think that that may not be a bad idea to do that if we can and kind of protect some of the real estate excise tax. So I'll be working with Kate Campbell and 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 Jen Barley to to make sure that, sorry, my appointments are coming up. Um to to talk about what capacity we have there and and the potential use of these funds for that.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Will be put on to the agenda for the twentieth?
Yep. Well, I'll work with Jen to to do that because it's budgetary. So I'll just have her wrap it up into one of her normal budget updates.
Okay.
Uh, but we will come back with specifics associated with and and identifying the specific funding source that we'll use for these upgrades to this facility. Um, it would either come out of of real estate excise tax or ARPA, and we'll cover that when when Jen does that budget update.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you. So the next topic I have is um talking about fentanyl detection devices, and I'm gonna hand this one over to Commissioner Netherland because he asked that we put this on the agenda.
So uh they did include it in here, right?
Yes.
So uh they're already doing it in our next-door neighbor. I wanted to point out, uh, and I appreciate uh talking with the sheriff this morning on this as well. Um to me, I see this as an absolute uh no-brainer tool that's necessary. And I'd like to bring it forward, and hopefully we'll just take care of it and cover it. A couple of things to remember as the representative of the risk pool, I'm completely aware that the number one risk, the biggest issue that we face is overdoses in the jail uh for lawsuits and stuff. So just an expenditure like this could make a huge difference on any future lawsuits that come on. And just ask Thurston County, and that's why they're doing it, because they have some big lawsuits that are happening to them right now. Uh, with that being said and talking with the sheriff, I understand they're getting a uh working to get a a drug dog that will initially help them to find it, but this machine will help them to be able to pinpoint it and uh be able to provide better protection, not just for the inmates that are in there, but also for our staff. Now, last week, we had an overdose. And last was here recently, we had a uh deputy, uh, an officer that was taken to the hospital for exposure. So no matter what, it's happening all around. It is not just for the lawsuit, but I wanted to bring this forward for the idea of protection for our staff. I might be uh trying to be a little bit of a of a uh a a soothsayer or a future seer, but I have a real a real fear that we will not only have these risks uh to exposure accidentally, but that here eventually you'll find one that will get it so cheap and they will crush it up, and they will be throwing one of our deputies' faces on purpose with a purpose to do damage. And that's my greatest fear. And the grant, I understand, maybe I'm tinfoil-hatting it or whatever, but I think about that one all the time. And if it's something that we can stop, I think we should expend this money to make sure that that doesn't, or best we can to make sure it doesn't happen, and make sure that each one of our men and women that work there get to go home to their families. Uh, it seems like, I know it seems like a lot to some, but it seems like a low cost for the benefit that we can truly get out of this thing. And it's already being shown to work, so I'm hoping you'll not only please consider it, I'm hoping you'll ask to have it put on the agenda and move it forward uh to get it purchased.
Well, how does Sheriff jump on this too and get his comments?
Absolutely. Uh, as the Commissioner said, we spoke earlier today. We're in the process of trying to replace one of our canines who recently passed away and with quite a few different things. Number one, the law changes. Number two, the lower number of pursuits that we've had using our dogs. The numbers don't really reflect the need for a third pursuit dog, so we're looking at getting a drug-sniffing fentanyl-type dog. And if we had this tool, the two of those things would be very useful because this is very specific on a spot. You have to have vapor, a liquid, a solid, something to measure, but you can't just screen the whole jail with a device like this. What we would do is we would bring in a fentanyl-sniffing dog. They would be able to alert in a room, and then we would use a tool like this to identify what it is that we see. So the two things together would be extremely important. Uh, as the Commissioner mentioned, uh, we've Fentanyl is being introduced into jail facilities across the state in very creative ways. From soaking paper to doing all kinds of different things. Uh, and it's finding its way in regardless. We have a scanner, yet it's still making it in. So we need to be able to have tools and we had to use a dog from. Uh, Pierce County to come down and search our facility after the overdose and the individual was uh sustained. He didn't pass away. But we searched the whole facility with that dog and that's something we would like to do. Our deputy was exposed to a possible substance a couple of weeks ago, and if we had a device like this, we would be able to go right to the source. Test it, see what it is and give either a. A little peace of mind or know how to respond better. So it's just another tool that would be very important as a safety tool. Other things are schools are asking me on a regular basis if we can bring in fentanyl sniffing dogs and that type of stuff. So these tools would work together. I think they would work with Jamie with the uh Coroner's Office to be able to keep her cell. Her and her staff safe as well and death investigations and other things. So it wouldn't only be our office. It it could be in the courthouse. It could be in lots of different areas within the county and it's a safety issue. So I'm very much in support of it.
Oh, go ahead, Jamie.
I just wanted to add something. I know this is pretty sad, but um. Mason Ca- County is the highest county in the state of Washington per capita for fentanyl related deaths. So our county has the highest um drug related deaths in the whole state of Washington per capita. So that's pretty, that's pretty bad.
Yeah, that is. So. Because we are the highest and that that makes me wonder too if if. Is one enough?
Yeah, I mean, uh, the deputy was on scene with us. Um, we had to use our net narc hand for him. So we were on a fentanyl death when that happened and. We're just running into it a lot.
Right.
They they run about eighty grand a piece. That's a great question, uh, from Commissioner Trask. Is one enough? I believe me, I'm a tight one. I don't like spending a bunch of money, but I truly think that this is going to save lives, not a life. Uh, is one enough or one enough for now or?
Right.
Sheriff?
Well, obviously, if we could have one for the coroner's office, one for the jail and one for patrol, that would be the ideal, but you know, that's a lot of money. Uh, and how do we justify that? Uh, it it comes back to uh what do you guys feel is? Available. But yeah, a couple would even be that much better because it's a big county, a thousand square miles, and you're trying to drive that thing. Which may be some important time difference, but one is a great start too. We'll be grateful for whatever we get.
Perhaps we consider one for now and then have the discussion in budget. Uh, for another out of one time expenditures.
I I do like that idea because we don't know exactly how we're going to use it yet and how effective it is. We might find that we use it more than we ever dreamed. We may find that, no, it's not. The dog does most of it and that. So I wouldn't want to overspend right upfront. So that's actually a real good idea.
Yeah, I I I like the idea. We, oh, I wonder. So what if we reach out to the to um health? Our health department because they did get some some extra funds. I wonder if we could use some of their funds for the for the purchase of this because it, I mean, it is dealing with health. And if we can find a way to. Help the help the state help us. I think that that might be a. A positive move forward.
So we haven't heard from Commissioner Commissioner Shaw yet, but in my understanding that you're in favor of going out uh looking to procure cure one. While at the same time just being open to asking and looking for what funds we can get in the meantime, while waiting to procure it, if not taking it out of the general fund.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it the fentanyl is such a big, um, I guess it's it's the popular drug now, um. And and it's probably one of the scariest in my opinion. And so to be able to to protect our 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 people. That that's always been my priority. So I and and I don't think that you have a. You don't have to put on a tinfoil hat to see what's going on out there in the street. So so don't. Let's just keep our people safe. Commissioner Shady?
Yeah, so I'm supportive. Um, it it just a a couple of, I guess, tactical questions. Um. This would be a, is this a sole source purchase kind of deal then? I mean, is this is this something that we can? Kind of piggyback on what Thurston did and and get it that way. And then um. Yeah, I guess that would be my big question is just, you know, kind of what that what that process looks like. I'm certainly supportive um. In in terms of giving you guys more tools. And I like the idea of. Let's see how we deploy this first. Let's see how effective it is and how much we use it and then. Um, then we can revisit uh over time as you get used to the tool.
That's a smart move, Commissioner. That may cut down on time if we can literally, if if Mark can call and see if we can piggyback on. Their procedures they already did to to get that. Uh, we do it already with MRSC and everything else. Why not just uh? Capitalize on that and get this thing right away.
Maybe they'll mass produce them and the price will drop.
For our second and third one.
And then I guess, you know, the other the other part of that is, I mean, if there's, you know, if there's only one in Thurston County and they're. You know, they're they're a pretty sizable county population and geographically, um, you know, just we could probably figure out how to make it work with one initially. So.
I wonder if they're taking the same same uh steps that that we're talking about here, trying it out to see. How it works and then move forward.
I think that is part of it. At Risk Pool, they were talking about just trying to find any answer that they could. So they may be reaching out and just grasping at straws too. But at the same time, I felt as though. I I would be guilty if we weren't doing the same, knowing that what's happening, uh, and there's even a possibility. They've already done the work. I just thought we had to just jump on it. So. I appreciate you guys' consideration on it. So can we ask them to go ahead and start the process and then get it on there to where? Either way, we'll find a way to fund it however the is best and get it passed and get it done.
Yeah, hundred percent of that, for sure.
Go for it.
So just a just a quick comment. I actually had a a conversation with the undersheriff Adams. Uh, last week and um. And and I think that there's 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 pros and cons. I mean, I think that the drug sniffing dog is definitely something that they need and and is pretty versatile and. And and can benefit the sheriff's department with a a tool that they currently don't have now. Uh, one of the benefits that he pointed out about this device is. Um, that it could be programmed, right, for the next drug that comes out uh that that people start to use and. And whereas, you know, training a dog, a dog's trained for a specific purpose and and then you can you can add to that. Box of tools that the dog has, uh, but it's probably not as quickly as you could do a modification of this. Um, and and I do think that that having this device uh located in the corrections facility, it's always there.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have to, we don't have to 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 call an officer in with a drug drug sniffing dog every time we try and book somebody to make sure that they don't have fentanyl on them. So. I think that this device here, I guess, Mark's perspective is. That I I think that the Commissioner Netherland has a good idea about utilizing this in our correctional facility. Um, and to to help protect our our folks there. And and if it works well and and we find it easy to use. Uh, uh, then I'm I'm glad to hear the the commissioners believe that it would be a good tool to to purchase to allow the sheriff's office to use it too.
All right, Mark, you win. Let's order six. Just kidding. Let's stick with our one. And we'll see how it works out uh for through budget. Because even if it's not in your initial budget, we can have discussions uh. We have months to to learn how to use this and find out the benefits that it has before we even consider anything different.
Well, I think the other the other, the the real benefit is is it can be used for other substances. You know, as we. We see there's, you know, changes in what is kind of being the, you know, used heavily in the community. And so if this can adapt to that, then that. That means it's just that much more of an effective tool to use.
And it it indicates that it'll pick up hazmats or explosives as well. So it has a pretty. Uh, wide scope of use.
The question, the just one quick question that we should probably run down as well is, um, it it does mention in their post from Thurston County. That um, you you know, that it requires some software updates for those other other things. And so, you know. I don't know if there's like a subscription that comes with this in addition to the capital purchase or or what, but just, you know, as long as we're including. Um, TJ and and Ben in those conversations so that we know what we're getting as well.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioners. Go forth, Mark, and make something happen.
All right, I will work with the. I will work with the sheriff's office to make sure that we can coordinate this and and I'll work with Jen to figure out where we're going to do it. Get it paid for.
Thank you.
Uh, all righty.
Thank you.
Let's see, where are we at? The last item I had on here was a a letter that we received from the Department of Natural Resources. Um, so the Department of Natural Resources is reaching out to the Commissioner's Office to talk about. Long term health of our forest lands and kind of how they. What their approach is and how they assess it and and um. They're asking to to set up a special meeting. So I wanted to just make sure that the commissioners were aware that we received this request from DNR. And then get some feedback from you on on how you'd like to move forward. I think for different things, we assign one commissioner to go talk, but. Uh, maybe a maybe having a sit down deep dive with uh DNR to talk about how they're managing our land. Maybe a a benefit to have a special session for that, to have a special meeting for that where all three commissioners can participate or. Up to you guys.
Commissioner Trask, you're already serving on the. That's my thought. Uh, I I have no problem with us coming together, discussing how we want to do it. Uh. You know, having a small briefing just specifically on that and then tasking the commissioner who's already handling that to relay our message. You're smiling. Is that a bad thing?
I'm actually giggling because I knew this was coming down the down the pike, um, just because we've talked about it at our last uh Timber Counties meeting. And. I think it's it's pretty cool that that um Hillary or Commissioner Francis is requesting to work with the counties. Not often does that happen at the state level. And so I'm I am incredibly excited. Um, there's. Just a few counties at the moment that she's reaching out to and we were at the top of her list. And so I I think it's it's pretty cool that that she's taken an interest in Mason County and wanting to help us understand and and. Help them, help DNR also understand where Mason County is and our our thought process too. So I don't. We can have um a meeting about it, if you are briefing about it, um, or we can invite her in. Either way is good. For me or good with me. I just think it's pretty darn cool that she's wanting to come to Mason County.
Yeah, I I think uh I think it's a fantastic opportunity and I'm 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 comfortable either way. I just would maybe want to check with Sarah that the expectation is that. You know, the expectation from Commissioner France and her staff is that we're all present, then. You know, I would. I would hew to that, but if if not, um, I think we should definitely keep talking about this and. You know, Commissioner Trask and I will do a great job representing Mason County in in these conversations. So I'm I'm comfortable with that. As long as their expectation isn't that the three of us are there for it.
Well, I do I do think the other, um, many of the other. Counties are having all of theirs. They're either council members or commissioners meet together with her. I it's more of a, to me, it's more of a a. A a respect issue also, showing her that that we respect her position. And acknowledging that that she wants to come to Mason County.
And as I was reading through this letter, um. It appears that the DNR has with recent changes in legislation really has increased the. Uh, number of tools that they have to to manage forest land statewide. And so I feel like this is partly a um an opportunity to to educate the commissioners. On the different programs that they have in place and how those might be utilized. And so definitely give us an opportunity to. Ask questions and and talk about these, you know, the the trust land transfer program that they have or the reconveyance or direct transfer. All these different opportunities that they have to to do exchanges or or um. Kind of swapping out land and and how does that work? And especially if they identify specific forest land here in Mason County. That they want to take out of the trust land program and put into some other program, then how does that, how does that look? Um, so.
And I I think the land pooling and the land exchange, those those are. Um, concerning to me. And so if if we could have her explain. A little, give us a little bit more detail on that, understanding how if we transfer. Land to and we take land from another county, how does that, how does that work? Because it it it's very different.
Yes, I'm I'm really, I'm personally, I'm interested in learning more about these programs that they have in place. So I would love to be a part of that. If it's just Commissioner Trask or all three commissioners. Um, I would appreciate that opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All righty. So that is all I had for support services.
All right. No administrator updates?
I had one for you and I forgot what it was. Oh, I was gonna talk to you about, we actually recently had the Department of Labor and Industries come in. And um go through our Superior Court facility. And so we had had some questions and some concerns about um potential um. Areas of mold. And that's initially why we brought them in is to kind of assess the building. Uh, while the individual is here, he did a really a a pretty thorough testing and a thorough uh view of that facility. I'm going to be sending a message out to occupants of that facility to please not open their windows. So our windows over there in that facility, you can actually open them and get some fresh air in there sometimes. Um. The the paint that they used on the outside of that facility had lead in it. Um, the lead paint was scraped off and they did went through a pretty major. Revitalization of that facility fifteen years ago, I think, is what Kelly was telling me. Um, so they scraped off all the old lead paint, but with that old lead paint, um, lead would seep into the wood. And so then you can't really get the lead out of the wood side of it. So when we painted, the the way to deal with that is that you paint over it. Uh, to seal it in the wood uh with new paint. Well, that fifteen year old paint that's on the outside of those window sills. Um, is starting to deteriorate. And so he was able to find um. Some lead in in one of the paint chips was on the outside of the window. So nothing on the inside of the window tested positive for lead, which is great. Uh, but just as a precautionary measure, I'll be sending an email out to occupants of that building to to please keep your windows closed until we. Figure out a way to mitigate that.
It also helps with the air conditioning, right? Doesn't send it into wacky modes. That's the technical term.
Yeah. Yeah. So and and then I'll have more information for you. I think I get a report. Uh, Nicole worked uh directly from L and I and and we'll get a report coming in the end of July.
All right, sounds good. Commissioners, anything for Mark?
Me?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. So I I do have one thing for Mark. Sorry, Mark.
Come on back, Mark. Oh, I was I was just saying goodbye to Jamie, so.
I'm sorry. I just I just wanted to quickly just ask that we do. I know it's so difficult for. Um. Let's let's try to keep our agenda revisions down to the bare minimum. Think we have three.
I I I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Trask, um. Kind of the the next couple of weeks are are really difficult weeks. So the sense that uh. You know, we have a lot of holidays coming up and it's kind of pushing our meetings around and. And so in order to to get things briefed in front of the before, in the front of the board, so that we can actually put them on a regular agenda to get decisions made. Um, this this last week was kind of tough at the end of the week. And so it did. What I felt, these are the 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 revisions that we saw in this agenda, I felt were justified. Um, but I definitely hear what you're saying and I will try to. To prevent ones that are not necessary moving forward to 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 be placed late on the agenda.
Well, and this was kind of a message out to um department heads and other elected also to to be aware that that we do have. Holidays coming up. We have um a lot of things that are um taking briefing days or taking. Commission days or regular meeting days. So message out to department heads and electeds that. We need to make sure that you get your stuff into McKinsey as soon as possible so that they can be on the agenda.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And Madam Chair, my.
What's that?
My Commissioner discussion may include Mark two, I guess.
Okay.
I have an item for Commissioner discussion.
Alright, do we want to hold that off until the end? So don't go away, Mark.
Oh, I'll be here.
Okay. Alright, let's go on into um, Community Development. Kel.
Good morning. So last week, Commissioner Shute uh, brought up um, less restrictive alternatives, which is a. Uh, LRA. It is a. Type of. Let's see. I'm just learning about all of this. Um, actually, a secure community transition facility is a type of LRA, a less restrictive alternative. And Commissioner Shute uh, brought up this subject and wondered if our code. Regulates this in any manner, which it does not. It's silent on this subject manner. Um, it is a. Um, type of LRA residential facility program operated by the Department of uh, DSHS, Department of Social uh. Uh, Human Services. Program offers a twenty-four-hour intensive staffing and close proximity supervision by trained escorts. When residents leave the facility. So currently, um. My understanding is that uh. Um, there are uh, folks who are. Um. Uh, what is the word? Not obtained, but um, that are at the facility, is it? McNeil Island? Okay, at McNeil Island. And so when they, when the court finds that they are able to leave that facility, they could go to what's called an LRA or a. SCTF, the Secure Community Transition Facility, and this is run by the state. It could be placed anywhere within Washington State and jurisdictions typically don't have. Um, notice or what have you. So we want to be proactive and put into our code. Um, some um, restrictions on where these can be placed within the county. So I have proposed. Um, to add the language into our Title Seventeen, our zoning code. And anywhere um, that uh, residential. Um. Zoning can take place throughout the county, all the different zones within the rural area, Shelton, city of, or. Shelton, urban growth area, Belfair, urban growth area, and Allen. Um, that it would be required to go through a public hearing process with the hearing examiner. And would have to meet some minimum criteria. So in your packet, I've. Put that proposal in there. This is something that would need to go through the Planning Advisory Commission. And they could work on the language and then it would come before the board once the Planning Advisory Commission. Um. Uh, made a recommendation for your final approval. So I just wanted to um, bring this forward, see if you guys had any thoughts, and if you. Did want to direct us in planning to bring this to the Planning Commission.
I have some ideas. First, I want to thank Kevin. For uh, bringing this out. Uh, I do know the situation that is happening. Uh, down south from from us and how this is coming about, so I very much appreciate and just bringing it out forward. I would like to say that um. Personally, I prefer much more restrictive. I think it should be uh, in an area that has a septic. I think of this as an actual. Facility, uh, even if it may be a smaller facility, I think it should be in um, much more restricted uh. Conditions before it can be allowed. I think it has to be on a sewer. I think uh, it should be no less restrictive than we did for marijuana when we did um, a thousand feet from schools and the like. Um, it could even be worse than, and I definitely agree with uh, must be a public hearing. But even when you have a public hearing, there's things we have to guarantee they make or by law they're supposed to grant it, so. Uh, just people being upset, so I want to look at making sure that we tighten this as as much as possible to make sure that. Fewer and fewer people are impacted. It is uh, going to be happening. We're going to have to deal with it. If we put the structures around it now early, we have a better chance of dealing with it uh, and handling the the impacts of it. But again, thank you, Commissioner Shute, for being the first one to jump on that. I was aware of it and was trying to figure out how to go about it and. Then one day he just threw it out, so there it is. Let's let's do it. And sometimes that is the best way to get it done, and I just wanted him to know that I very much appreciated that because I was trying to think in my head how. So thank you.
Mr. Shute?
Yeah, well, no, I I I mean, I have to give a ton of credit to Kell and Marissa for for digging into this issue and learning about it. Uh. Trying to put some code language to the idea, and so I I I think this is a great start. I'm I'm certainly open to. Uh, you know, higher um, or or more restrictions and or further distances. I think that's, I think that's probably fine. Um, you know, so I'm I'm definitely open to that and and obviously the feedback that we would get from. Uh, the Planning Commission as well, but I I think this is an important first step. Uh, to getting. Um, you know, getting the code altered so that it can. Uh, it can be clear upfront what the expectation is if if you're going to cite one of these facilities in Mason County, so. I appreciate your openness and willingness to work on this.
Yeah, I had hoped that the the legislature would would fix. You know, take the steps to to fix it, but. I also appreciate lo- having local control. And so I'm super excited about this, and the more restrictive. In my opinion, the better. Um. It it's always good to help people. But. I I I hesitate. When it, when it's a, when it affects our neighbors. And so the more. Yeah, I I I support moving it forward to the Planning Commission.
As I was saying, I I'm hoping that you will and that we will require a hookup to a sewer system. The reason why I say that is. We have these things we're dealing with with our rentals and stuff that we're looking at. We have a lot of people that are using. A two-bedroom, three-bedroom facility. But you have fifteen people in there, even if they're not spending the night, you're going to overdo these septic systems. I had a person that had my ear yesterday. And was explaining that made it very clear and I could not. Disagree with what she was saying. The truth of the matter is, you even have three, four. Bedrooms in there. Uh, you still have all the staff, you have everything else. That should not be on a common three-bedroom septic. So having it also near uh, services and the ability to deal with whatever issues may arise there. Uh, close proximity is a benefit as well. Even though you want it away from schools, you need it close to facilities that have to deal with. What may occur there. Again, thank you for all your hard hard work, Kel.
Wonder if looking at at care centers, what they, what's required for a care center? Because in my mind, it's it's kind of the same thing. It's not as, you don't have to have the the. Registered nurses or the LPNs, but but a care center for elderly, I do think that they're. They have special requirements also, so it might be worth looking. We're we're looking at their requirements. But thank you so much for working on this.
Yep, no problem.
I feel like I have to come to the defense of our legislators a little bit. I believe that they did come up with a solution for this and that section was vetoed by the governor, so.
It was. It was. I included all branches in that. Alright, next we have uh, Taylor Shellfish. The public hearing.
Morning. Hi, so I was asked by Commissioner. Trask and Commissioner Shute just to give a quick briefing on the extension of the public hearing for Taylor Shellfish's. Open Bay Proposal, which is SHR twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-three. Um, just as the quick. Sentence for it, uh, it's a proposal for uh. Total fifty-acre uh, floating oyster farm, um, in which the gear would take up an estimated nine-point-one acres of surface water. So uh, the project receives Type Three review under the Shoreline Master Program. Uh, the original hearing date was May twenty-fourth. Uh, but to collect information um, and then provide information in response to public comments, Taylor Shellfish requested. An extension to June fourteenth. Um, and then on June third, uh, they requested a further extension. For the hearing to be on August ninth, um, due to additional requests of information from the county. Uh, the applicant Taylor Shellfish needs additional time to address. Uh, policies and regulations for public access as outlined in. Uh, Mason County Code seventeen-point-five-zero-point-one-four-zero. Um. Public access is defined in Mason County Code as the ability of the general public. Or in some cases, a specific community to reach, touch, and enjoy the water's edge, to travel on waters of the state. And to view the water and the shoreline from adjacent locations. Uh, the CEP that they submitted says approximately fifty acres would become inaccessible to boaters due to the presence of floating culture gear. Uh, so because the location of the project would impact existing public access in the form of that fifty acres of state water. The project must be consistent with the policies and regulations of MCC seventeen-point-five-zero-point-one-four-zero, which is our public access code. So essentially, applicant need more time to make sure that the public access section of our code can be addressed and. Um, I'll leave it open uh, for questions, uh, considering. Um, you folks want an update.
Yeah, I I guess the, I wanted just an update about, there were questions about the um, why the extensions were or. You know, why the hearings were being extended and pushed out further and further. And so I just wanted the public to know. That there's nothing sneaky going on here. Everything is is going according to. Uh, the way that it should go.
Correct.
Yeah, I I I heard similar things. I mean, I'm sure we've all seen the emails, um, you know, and I think the. Public, when they see these dates get extended, that they think that there's. A little bit of a shell game going on, but it sounds like this is actually how the process should work when there's this level of public interest. In terms of making sure that all of the information is compiled. All of the, all of the projects' plans are are kind of aligned with code and and. That everybody's ready for that hearing when it does happen, uh, so that they can be responsive to the public's concerns and and questions, so.
Yep. Exactly. Want to make sure that it addresses everything it needs to address when it goes to hearings so that everybody has the most information possible.
So Luke, one of the other things that I'm hearing out there is um. The aspect that we will no longer be sending out more notifications, uh. If they do need another extension, then I, yeah, I understand it costs money and we. Uh, need to make sure everybody was no, was notified, but we need to notify them again if it goes. Any further than it's doing, perhaps uh, if they want uh, an extension, they need to pay for that notification. Uh, as an option, but we definitely don't want the public to. Get the idea that we will no longer be notifying them. Uh, I think that's just a misunderstanding of how it's read when they, when they read things. But I wanted to put that out there as well.
Yeah.
And it is, it's it's correct. That we will not, we, the commission won't have. Any vote on this particular project.
Correct, the commission has no vote. Uh, or saying the project is based on what is currently written in the code.
And then if uh, depending on how the hearing examiner process plays out, there are opportunities for. Uh. For appeal beyond the hearing examiner to the state. Is that the correct process?
Yep, so um, basically what would happen is the hearing examiner. Following the date of the hearing has ten business days to make a decision. Um, and so once the hearing examiner makes a decision, uh, we transmit that decision to the Department of Ecology. Ecology then has thirty days to make the final decision. On the hearing examiner's final decision, so um. If, let's say, uh, hearing examiner was to. Uh, approve with conditions and Ecology was to deny. The the decision is denied and the applicant can appeal to the State Shoreline Hearings Board if. The Mason County Hearing Examiner and the Department of Ecology both approve, um. There, you know, a party could appeal that decision also to the State Shoreline Hearings Board within um, the. Uh, appropriate window. I just don't have too much information on the procedures of the State Shoreline Hearings Board. And on um. Commissioner Evans, uh, comment about uh, public notice, yes, we we totally understand. Um, the the plan was to uh. Remail public notices uh, a little more than thirty days prior to the new date of the hearing. Um, in normal circumstances, when there was extension of of hearings, uh. We had normally not done remailed notices, but uh. We totally understand that this is the the reasonable thing to do, um, that it's better for the public. Um, to to basically redo the the public notices as it was at the beginning. Um, and so if they were to request. Further extension past August ninth, we would um, remail again.
Alright, appreciate your your. Your. Work on this. Um, I've I've heard great new or great um, reports on you and your. Ability to or accessibility, I guess.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, appreciate you. Any any further questions for for Luke?
Not for me. Thanks, Luke.
Thanks, Luke.
Alright, Kel. Do you have anything? Do we have anything more for Kel?
Um, just a reminder that tomorrow our office is closed up here at the Permit Assistance Center and we'll be in uh, Public Works. For an all-day training, uh, Smart Gov-specific.
Very cool.
Yeah. And we'll we'll be joined by some folks in Public Works and Environmental Health as well, so. We look forward to that.
And I sent over an email, um. Regarding the fire dangers. Issue, so um. Do, have you heard about any restrictions that that are coming our way?
Uh, no, of course, we have the restrictions on um, residential burning and that's not the recreational, so you could still have your three-foot. Fire ring, uh, recreational. Um, but not, you know, recreational brush or residential brush burning or the burn. Um, when folks get the burn permits, that's on restriction right now. And I don't know about. When we would have further. Restrictions. Um, hopefully the rain helped us out a bit this last week, so.
Yeah, that was lovely. Yeah, do, so do we have the restrictions up on our our website?
Yes, and if we we should, I know I know they're on the uh. Building Department's page. Um, do you want them on the homepage?
Um, where is this for people to to take, to find the information?
Yeah, if you go to Community Development, um. What does it say currently?
I know I've had a few people asking me, so it might might be good just to to put it up.
Um, yeah, I will have someone, I'll have um. Someone put in an IT ticket to get it on that, because actually what I'm seeing is the the um. IBC, the twenty-twenty-one IBC code update and the WUWE handout, but not anything on the burn restrictions, so. On our Community Development page. So I will get that. Uploaded.
Great, appreciate that. And then also, if you give me, give me a call after the our our briefing today, that would be sweet.
Me, sure.
Commissioners, anything for Kel?
Uh, just Kel, real quick, uh, for the LRAs, um, heading off to the Planning Commission, when when would that be? Uh, when would, when would that be on their calendar?
I'm hoping actually if I could um, get everything together, I can get it. To this month, because June nineteenth is Juneteenth. Holiday, so we would normally have our meeting then, but I'm going to hold it on the twenty-sixth, so. Um, I have some other. Code amendments that we're bringing forward that are related to the work Public Works is doing on the road standards, so we're. Coordinating and getting our codes updated to reflect that. And then just some minor code cleanup stuff, so I'm hoping to bring it all together on the June twenty-sixth meeting, and then that would. Put um. It coming to you guys for a public hearing sometime in August, but would be briefing the following, you know. Uh. The following Monday, because I could put my briefing sheet in. Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Madam Chair, just so you're aware, I just checked and our front page does have it for the Mason County website, has the burn ban on the front page in the first paragraph.
Alright, great.
Oh, yes, okay. That's where I saw it. I was I was on our page, but I'm like. Okay, good. It is on there.
So before they can get to your page, they have to go through that first.
Yeah. Great.
Great, thank you. Anything else for Kel? All right, thanks, Kel. All right, let's move on to um public health and I believe I see Melissa on here.
Morning commissioners. Um I've got two items. The first one is we have a vacant position on the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board, a citizen position for District Two. So we have a news release announcing a call for applications that we would like to read at the next regular meeting, which is the twentieth.
So I I do think it's actually District Three.
Is it District Three? Okay.
Amanda Gonzalez is from District Two.
Got it. I think I put the correct one in the briefing. I get them confused.
And you'll read it for us?
The uh the release has District Two in it, so.
It does? Oh, no. Okay. I will correct that for the action agenda.
Otherwise, all good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next item. Um so we have the funding recommendations for our homeless response grants. We received six proposals from the RFP that we released earlier this spring, a total of. Five point one million dollars over the next biennium, so beginning July twenty twenty-third through June of twenty twenty-five. Um and these are the funding sources for these are from state and local grants, namely the consolidated homeless grant through the Department of Commerce. Um as well as the local document recording fees. The Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board has reviewed the applications, they scored them and have made the funding recommendations, which are um attached to the packet. Um and these will go towards all of the existing programs that we have. So we have permanent housing programs. Housing essential needs, all of our overnight emergency shelters for family, domestic violence and single adults. Um eviction prevention and rent assistance programs and coordinating entry. We do anticipate additional emergency funds from the Department of Commerce. Um and those will be allocated to the above programs um based on the priority recommendations. Uh the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board, when they scored the applications, um we already had them rank what the priority areas were. So that if additional funds um are available throughout the year, we already know where they're going to be allocated. Um and those are going to be the family, domestic violence and single adult emergency shelters. So the additional funds aren't confirmed yet. We're still waiting on confirmation on the exact amount from Commerce, so they're not included in the. Um funding recommendations that are attached um for this briefing, but I really hope to be able to brief them and have. The final contracts with the updated scopes of service and funding amounts ready. At least for an update by um the June twenty-sixth briefing. We're still waiting on um the contracts from Commerce, so we wanted to at least provide you with. The existing recommendations as they stand now and let you know that there will be some in emergency funding. Added to them. I think the amount that we're looking at right now is about eight hundred thousand dollars. Um and then, as I mentioned, you know, once we have those emergency funds confirmed and the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board approves where they'll go into. We'll have the updated contracts. Um to brief.
But I before I say something, I I want to um make note that just because somebody asked me a question does not make it true. It does not make it accurate, uh but I have been recently uh. Requested information in regards to our Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board and um they say that uh. Well, could would you mind just sending me a breakdown on who's on it and what organizations that they represent? So I can talk to these other people and see if any of what they're saying is has any truth to it, or if it's just an imaginary worry that uh. It's just a bugaboo sitting out there.
Yes. And I also, I as a follow-up to this, I know that the board has requested, haven't forgotten the request to do a formal presentation on all of the services that. We're funding with these dollars. Um you know, what our emergency shelters do, what's the housing and essential needs program? What do all of those things mean? Um my question for the board would be initially, the thought process here would be, we would have at least the draft contracts ready for review by the twenty-sixth. Um also pending our commerce contracts coming through, the hope is that everything can be. Moved to an action agenda by the first week of July, just because that is when the these contracts were planned to be effective. Um. Would it be the board's preference to do a presentation on all of these different programs? At that time, would you like to wait until after the contracts are signed to do an update on what the agencies and the providers will be doing?
I have no view that we're gonna be trying to deny something based on your your presentation, so it doesn't matter for me on the time. I think uh for myself. And for my request is just to be better educated on it, so that when I am talking to constituents, I can explain what I know and what I understand uh. Uh through your presentation, so. I'm not looking to to change our position with any of them at this point.
Um so again, just briefing what the current funding recommendations are, um and the ask for this briefing would just be. Approval to go ahead and move forward and start developing the contracts. And then again, we'll come back on the twenty-sixth with hopefully the updated amounts. Um given that commerce should have confirmation on what the emergency funds are in the next week or two.
Yep, I'm good with it. Um and I also want to thank you for coming over and spending. Um some time with me going over different issues, so um. Your knowledge and your passion for this is. Amazing, and we are so lucky to have you here.
I I appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you. I appreciate your time also.
So Melissa, would this go, this request to approve these funding amounts would be on the agenda for June twentieth? Then the next. Opportunity is July.
Is it July fifth, the next action agenda after? Okay, it would be Ju- July fifth.
But we won't have a briefing that Monday before it, so make sure everything is.
Twenty-sixth, June twenty-sixth.
Yeah, but we we are going to, what we planned on doing commissioners is, and and if you guys are okay with this, is on Wednesday, the fifth. We would have our regular commission meeting. And then we would have a briefing after that.
Yeah.
So that we could then, if needed, to get things on the agenda for the eighteenth, that it could be briefed. So I don't get in trouble from Commissioner Trask for stuff on there late.
I do have to say that on the twenty-sixth, um I do have a Community Action Council. Uh board retreat at Alderbrook. And they are starting their meeting at. Ten, I believe, nine or ten. And so I told them that I would be late. But I would like to make it for lunch if possible.
Well, we'll do everything we can to help you.
Appreciate that. All right, anything for Melissa or help? It's like you're good to go and you're you are at uh Wasoffo this week, right?
Um, yes. I'm available by email. Commissioner Netherall, I will send you um the board member list for.
And 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 who they represent and stuff, please. Thank you.
Share that with the the three of us.
I'll send them to all three.
I'm very aware who's on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, let's move on to public works.
Good morning, commissioners, still. Yes, barely. Um, we have just one item. Uh we're looking for approval for a resolution to adopt uh updating. The right-of-way procedures for public works. We'd like to add Tina Schaper in the areas of acquisition and property management. That's it.
That's easy, sounds good to me. Commissioners.
I wish you here.
Alrighty.
The only other thing I got is a couple of just reminders of Harstein Island Bridge. Uh they're gonna start the hydro uh scarification tomorrow. Uh that means they're gonna close one lane down for the next uh two to three weeks uh before, so they can get that accomplished. And then Old Belfair Highway, the county forces that completed their dirt work there. Uh we actually have uh went out to bid for the paving project, granite construction has got the as low bid of um. About six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Um which is less than the engineer's estimate, so we're good there. And then road crews were working on both Lynch Road. And Grapeview Loop Road about shoulder widening. So if you get a chance to get by there. We're there.
Well, they always do a great job. I like driving on the roads and seeing the new, the wider shoulders. Commissioners, anything for Mike?
Not for me.
Thank you, Mike.
You.
Easy peasy, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, um. Let's go ahead and if you don't mind, let's take a look at the our historic commission interview. Would you like to proceed? Or how?
Yeah, I'm I'm comfortable pointing Andrea.
Yep, same.
All right, as am I. So if we could have staff send her information, that would be great and let her know.
We can run for the next agenda.
Yes. All right, and now we have Commissioner Discussion.
So in all these years, uh we've done these interviews. Uh I'm sorry, I laughed at Commissioner Shuji, but that was the first time anybody asked us what the mission was. And I was caught off guard. I know he had to be caught off guard. We all were, I'm scrambling to look it up. Could we please just have uh that front page added on to our questionnaire for the next time it happens in case uh. Uh gives us a little basis for the questions uh to be a little better prepared. You handled exceptionally well. Aside from my laughing, I apologize.
I was uh, yeah, that was, I wasn't prepared for that, obviously, so.
I just, all these years, what, I'm working on twelve years, I never, nobody ever asked me that.
Yeah, I thought that was good. That was good.
Yeah, so please just uh add it to our questionnaire so we have it on the front page, what they are, what their mission is and stuff.
All right, Commissioner, is anything else for Commissioner Discussion?
Up for me.
No calendar updates or anything either, right?
Um, I'll take a look here. Nope, I don't think so. I don't know, what I I do have to ask, uh what is over your shoulder?
Have no idea. What's part?
The the things with.
In the window?
Whatever with the flags on them there?
Oh, those are uh slippers and that. Uh George Bush Senior and his wife. They were given to me uh at one of those events. It it does not come close to your Reagan hat, but. I thought it was, I actually I put it up there because of your Reagan hat. I'll be honest with you, that's why I did. You should have seen Mark the first day saw it on the table. They all came in, what the heck is that?
Didn't try him on?
No.
I thought I thought they were specific uh slippers to wear into commission meetings.
Who wouldn't?
I just thought they were cute when they gave it to me. I just thought that was awesome. And like I said, uh I'm just trying to compete with that that hat behind you there.
There you go.
So I I do have one addition. This weekend is um downtown Get Down. Um in Shelton, so there are. That's gonna be going on from twelve to eleven P twelve, yeah, twelve to eleven PM. Um. It'll be uh bands downtown, merchants will have their stuff out on the the streets, and so welcome everybody to. To get down downtown.
And what day is that again? I'm sorry.
Saturday. It's also the same day as the Fjorden Fjorden Crossing, so it's it's a it's a busy weekend this week.
Yeah, so add that to our calendar that we may both be attending that event uh and taking testimony about how much fun everybody's having.
Right, right. And then um Sunday's also Father's Day, so just wanted to wish everybody a happy Father's Day.
Sad part is, is I have all these kids and I didn't know until yesterday. I was planning on all kinds of stuff and everybody's saying, what are you talking about? So. I'm bad at those things.
That's all right, too.
So hey, graduation, uh to let you know, so one of my sons graduated the other day. And it was funny, I'm sitting there and sitting next to me was my daughter, who or my one son who graduated two years earlier. Another daughter who graduated from the same high school twenty-one years earlier. And my daughter who will be graduating from that high school five years from now. I'm from Belfair. We don't even bat an eye at that stuff.
I think that's Mason County.
Probably.
Yep. All right, anything else, commissioners?
Will we adjourn?
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys. Have a nice week.
Thank you.